Yes, the sound system is diverse.
Okay. So we have four, we can proceed. The announcements are next. It was going to be, we have to complete a Texas Open Meeting Act training provided by the Texas Attorney General Office, which I have attended one. So it's all commission members. Like as long as one does it, so I'm good. Then all commission members must attend to remain current concerning historic collections. But each, at least once a year, this is the commission members must attend the THL led group training. And then all commissioners should turn and copy the certificate they've taken the training, which I need to find that Brett would know because I took it with Brett. Something I need to find.
Okay, the ones that are online, webinars, does that count?
Okay.
Three D does count, don't say.
Yeah.
If you've done one of those, then I do multiple ones.
But I don't know if I got a certificate or anything. I said, I don't know if I got a certificate after the day.
Oh, the commissioner?
Yeah. But will they send me a certificate?
Yeah, if you download it, they'll send it to you. It just basically explains that there's five of us who are more walking around talking. Could be a form, the principal.
Yeah, I mean, I went through, I listened to the webinar, but I didn't. Like I said, I didn't see a certificate or anything.
So which one are you talking about?
Either there's the THC led one that would be, at least in one year, one or more committees need to from that one. But then all of them require, like the Texas Open Meeting Act training.
Okay, I've done that before, but I don't have any reason.
Yeah.
I will do it on, and then I need to check on Pam and Barb.
Dale's on the board on your announcement.
I see. I saw the sign, just need to click on that link and it'll take me to where I need to do.
We've all had to do.
Thank you.
That is all the announcements. Some to business, actually no, we have public comments first. And Janelle, I think you are about, how do I go with the stalking?
It's independent. It's just not, it's very independent.
So, so I'm asking you guys. Um, there's been several of us in the county historical commission and then several citizens, Wendy included. We've worked really hard at starting to document. This is the old map. We've already, we have over 400 entries now in this map. And it's, it tells, this is for Texas purposes, but it's also going to be reference for our county, our city, for historical, environmental, that sort of stuff later on. It's going to be a resource for us, for everyone, no matter what happens. Um, it doesn't mean it's going to stop Texas, but it just means Texas asked me to do something like this. I'm going to send it into them. And I give them the GPS, if I have name, address, right? If not, they need to go by GPS and what it is, what it's all about. But I have all of this, Wendy, like I said, has been working right with me. But we have it, we've got everything from caves on property to, yes, and to Indian, um, where civil war was, to, um, where Americans constantly wore, and there was a program, to just historical buildings, to rock fences, to old rock barns, to, to whatever, creeks, streams, all of this on this document. And most of the time it's multiple. If you find one of those places, it's going to say multiple and it's going to have all of many things listed on here. So I'm asking for you guys to help because we haven't really hit the city of Lankau. This is all only outstir up. And so we need some help documenting this. And it's very easy to get a GPS. It's just, I mean, some people will ask you to come on that property and you can really get a good GPS. You can also drive by and go, look, there is a bunch of this stuff. You can pull it up on your iPhone. If you get an iPhone, you can do it. Google Maps, you hit it, it'll show you exactly where you're at. You hit another button and it gives you the GPS address. It's that stuff. And so we need help.
I've got nothing. So you're needing people to go do this or you're just making, put something out on Facebook?
We can do both. And anybody who wants to do it, too, if they're driving by, go, oh my gosh, that house needs to be documented. Or that's, that's where that happened. And maybe it's not there anymore, but for our county records, we could say, this is where this happened. You know, because I, I mean, you would not believe the resources that have fallen into my lap of things that is just been amazing to find out. You know, it's just been wonderful. There's so many treasures here. And so I'm asking for you guys to help because we really need help documenting with the misses.
I can send y'all the blank.
It's an Excel sheet, yes.
And you just fill in the blanks.
I mean, we can send this around so you all can kind of get an idea.
I'll send you a blank one of those and you identify the owner if you have it, the address if you have it. But what we really need is longitude latitude. And we need to know what it needs to be documented. And you'll see the colors there, historical, rock, cemetery, archaeological, on and on. Um, but I'll send it to you a blank sheet and then as you go along, you can just fill it in. You know, and then shoot it to either Janelle or.
I wonder if we, like what, so once we've documented or someone documents on the property, what are the impacts of that other than trying to stop Texas or end all?
There is none.
Okay, I just want.
No, there is absolutely none. And, and this is not for public knowledge, or people's addresses that belong to latitude. It's not for public knowledge. It's for our historical records for this county and this community. Um, and it tells our story. Sooner or later, we'll be able to put a brochure together countywide to tell our story for this county, which is really never been told in a brochure form or something where visitors can come and see. And it's not going to give the locations except for the historical markers anyway. Anybody can look those up at cemetery, anybody can look those up on the maps. But it's not going to give those private, and I've been on private ranches and private homes now and documented tons of stuff. And I'm not giving, I mean, nobody has those addresses, I think.
I think maybe we should figure out how to get that information to some neighborhood community. You know, hey, this is like, it's not going to impact, no one's going to have access to your property or any kind of address information.
No.
But I feel like people, when they hear that, they're like, oh, is this going to be, is this going to impact our ability to build on it or anything like that?
It's not at all. And for Texas purposes, it does not mean it will stop them. It just means it is a stop sign for them to go, we need to stop and evaluate what's here. That's all it is.
Yeah, I just think it would help to get the public to know that.
Yeah.
Kind of like a myth versus fact post. You know, hey, these are the myths when you hear these.
Yeah.
These are the facts and then here's why you want to get it.
Yeah.
Like the old, like the old book, you know, on the larger property.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, all of that stuff. And there's a lot that were like all of the sisters, the sisters, the rock sisters, the wells. You know, all of that stuff is critical. And I went, I had one person from Lake of calling and said, hey, my neighbor's really worried. This is the El Christi La House. Can you come out and document it and run down there and do all that? You know, and so, and like, there's just airports, we put airports on there. And all those things are crucial when Texas is looking at this stuff. Because they don't know this little stuff. They, and they said, this is better for the next, they're going to use it as a model for other, other cities as they're coming through for the county historical missions to start documenting that. Because it makes their life easier.
I gave Brett a stick that had a lot of the rock walls, sister, things like that. So let her know that.
Well, if y'all could do the city part of it.
Yes.
We're definitely all over the county part of it. And we picked up some things in the city. But boy, we need to help for city stuff.
Because I was like, where am I sitting? I can't even think of, like. Put the whole square, really document the whole square on it, the whole historic square. Um, if you drive around, you see these, although anything over 50 years old.
Yeah.
That's historic at this point. I mean, I'm sorry, I can think of that.
Janelle, can I show you a picture?
Yes.
We can't believe this.
And Maria, we did, on your Facebook, we did post a postcard.
That's what we did on many.
People picked up, I wanted to like stop meetings and it says what we're looking for. And you have this. We did do that, but it needs to go way deeper.
Yeah, I think it's, it's going to be one of those things that you can consistently post to get the algorithms going. So it's not going to change any time soon. Yeah, you just keep doing it and it's what people know about it.
So you just want, even if like the house was down there, you just want houses, everything?
Everything, everything.
Everything.
I need to get my rock wall.
Yep, yep. Anything, wells and document the wells on your property. Because I was told, and maybe you've heard this one, that if Texas takes a well out, they make it new or they, they have to replace it.
That is correct.
That's right.
So those need to be documented because like some properties have progress, it's wells on them for livestock, for the things. And those all have been documented.
Or given value, or given value.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if mine's a well or an underground sister.
Either way, it needs to be documented.
You know, it looks like a well, but I'm no expert.
Yeah, yeah.
And your house.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
And your house.
So all of this is crucial. You know, we've got the river documented, um, any historic facts. I'm trying, trying to document the springs that are going into the river because that river only runs on springs.
I know. Got them like the EPA, like not EPA, but somewhat, or, or the alternative is there's a lot of nonprofits trying to save springs. Contact them and see if they can help us identify where they are and how to just get more muscle behind it.
Yeah, if I can find that resource, that'd be great.
To get to the head of the river.
I got the head of the river documented. And, and one of the things we're telling Texas, and y'all may feel differently, but one of the things we're saying is if you go on the west side, um, that is possible contamination of drinking water for the citywide. Because if they have, if they do a Texas highway on the west side, then, and there's a spill or gas fumes or whatever going into the river, that's, that. So, um, that is another thing.
Yeah, there's one of the houses, I think it's maybe the spring. Cause it's supposed to be a, a root cellar or something.
And those need to be documented. And I'm still voting for that great reason I need to document all the cellars.
Yeah, it's completely filled with water.
I was like.
It's a pool of water. You can see all the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to be surprised if there was a cellar that wasn't full of water because our water table is so.
Yes.
Like the way it is, is if you even build a cellar around here, even if you build a new one, it's going to fill up.
It is.
So there's no such thing as like.
There's a lot of cellars. There are a lot of cellars here.
I hope we all full of water.
Well, it's interesting because you wouldn't think that, but there really are. I'll have something to say. You know, they really are.
That'd be awesome if we could, if we could get the cellars on ground. I'll get the houses with cellars.
And maybe I went along the river.
Bold move.
Well, but you think about it, because this was the underground railroad for the black slaves.
Yeah, but it didn't fill up.
I mean, no, it wasn't because it was a, it was a stream, a small stream back then. It was not dammed.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. So the water table is really hard to feed water.
Exactly.
You don't want to.
I need to get with Jane about those springs that are up there that feed the river right up there.
Yeah, there's two of, well, I know one of, it's between Orsley's and the, and Leespin's. It's not a very big one. And then over on Hosee's side, there's quite a few, there's that big rock one.
Yeah.
That pool.
Yeah. So those I need to document. I'm not documenting those yet. So anyway, there's a lot. And so I'm asking, we're running out of time. They have not started this part yet, but they're, they said within a couple of months that they were to have a route chosen.
Well, if Wendy can send us all those blank documents, or we can just, you know, walk narrow or walk, think of.
Yeah, we documented the house was two. I still don't have any document, you know, any paperwork for it.
I think you're going to have to go up to the library and look at, uh, that inventory list.
Yeah, I, I've looked at, in fact, I've taken pictures because I'm trying to figure out where I was relatively good. The, um, year that the house was built.
You can go to the appraisal district and they'll have estimated a year, if not the year they built on it.
Sure.
Okay. I can do that.
That'd be great.
So that's what I have. I'm asking for.
Okay. Be able to slow.
We don't mind slow.
I think too, just getting the information out with social and.
Yeah.
Like anything where we put any information to pay someone's document.
Yeah.
Because I feel like a lot of people don't know about it, but they do know Texas trying to do this. So they're, they're upset enough with Texas that if they can help it, they'll.
Did you know there's only been less than 200 people respond to Texas?
I, yeah, that was my, that was the other thing was when we talked about having a letter writing campaign.
And Wendy, Wendy, I've talked about that, about what, it's just really hard for me because I'm still affiliated. I don't want to put my views on somebody else. And so it's really hard for me to put a generic.
We can just know that, I mean, as long as someone signs it, it doesn't really matter what it sounds like. It's like, I just want this. I mean, how long does it need to be? Like.
What is most effective, the letters, the emails, the?
All of it. Let me tell you, if you email, you CC it to, we can give you the list of people and including your legislation at the same time. Because that means they all get it. So we're, we can get one, I bet Wendy and I could put that about, put that to y'all, get it to you.
So, Janelle?
Yeah.
Uh, their county has a letter that, or the newspaper where the commissioners do not, Linda used to use that.
Right.
You could probably publish something real nice at this point.
I could be very careful for me to do this. I'd be very tacky already.
Or if you can get a volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But anyway, that's where we're at. Um, we're running out of time to express your views, but only till the 28th of November. And they're expecting tomorrow, which is tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow. They'll continue to.
They'll say the one day they're really taking consideration. So, and I don't know if y'all have looked at their map they have, but it is very confusing on how to put stuff on the map.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Like how do you, I tried for like a good.
I didn't, I just.
How the roads would be or like what property it was.
But you can add things on there with its concerns, but I can't figure that out.
Well, I think the concern expressed about water is, is so bad with.
Yeah. And I asked them, because I said, we had a cave on our property that goes across the road and it documented AM. It's a massive cave. And, um, it goes on Hosee's actually. And, um, I said, what are you going to do with, you get a cave? It was pipeline in. They said, baby, I said, yeah. And then you also drove it. We'll have to bring in a little special people to do that. And I said, okay, just put that in your notes. It's usually have to do that before you cross the river anywhere.
I just had a thought. Jackie, you've been in the library and you've seen the inventory. It's a two big notebooks of inventory. If you could document those on this sheet, because those are all historic. I realize there's a lot, but each one of those has a right to be in there as a historic home. So that would give us probably a hundred plus or more.
Okay, how do, do you want me to just get copies of all that stuff?
No, when I send you this blank sheet.
All you have to do is check.
Okay.
That'd be awesome.
And then there's special things like wells and poops and whatever.
Yes.
You'll need to, and then historical places, you know. Gail, you're the house here. And we know, you know, we need a spirit hole. Yeah, there's a spirit hole. That, that's a historic place. And anytime we can attach a historic name with a home, a place, a, a feature, they do.
And this city's house too.
Yes, exactly.
But I, it's going to be hard to, because I know why the old names, it's going to be hard. But we don't need the names.
We don't have to have the names. GPS is the key thing. And like that documented, they, because I don't know who the owner was on the one, they were very private about it. But they took, that people put me over there. And so I just put Ranch Road 1623 in Lake of Texas. And then I put the GPS, because that, they will be look easily, Texas can easily pull that out without any hesitation.
There's a sister across the street that, that, um, these burgers, these burgers. Well, we're selling lives now.
Yeah. I didn't know there was this. Like I went up to, you know, the Donna Fox, you know, up there and that, because there's a bunch of sisters up there. So I brought, I need those documented as possible. So. And, you know, there was a lot of things you shouldn't be able to document now. But anyway, that's where we're really at. Um, even though Texas may or may not come through, there's still the traffic impact, you know what, on here. Um, so. Yeah, well, me and Chuck still run around to this, so anyway. Oh, so you're done with that? So that's what I have, guys. Somebody has a question.
Is there one we can get a copy of that?
We can probably, we're fixing to update it again. So hang tight, we'll get it a little more updated for you. So.
And again, this will be ongoing for years.
Yeah, this is an ongoing project for Blanco County in general, because as things come up, up, you know, on the ones on my property or whatever, we need to document that. At least it's a good start. We've never had this before. We've never had it in the report for the whole county, ever of this stuff. Yeah, exactly. So anyway, that's where we're at on this.
You're trying to looking through the book, like the big.
Oh, the history book, yeah.
And then seeing what properties are.
Yeah, I tried. It's, it's very tedious for me to do that. I don't know, but I've done it and I've got some inspiration.
The big book is the only reason I know that Miss Sutti's house was built by Judge Morrison. If I had looked it, looked in that book in depth, I know what you mean. It's not easy to find.
No, no, no.
We need an army.
Yeah.
What's the difference between a brown county book and a black one?
The black one.
The one we've always had here.
The black one is from the one that, um, Paulus's mom.
And the brown, there's a tan brown one.
There's a brown one that's called just Blanco County.
But that, your mom didn't do that. I don't know, is that not Morrison's or is that, is that Spears?
I think it's.
I think it's Spears. Yeah. That was certainly back. And I've, I had something inserted from him. Yeah, the black one's got, it's like a Bible.
There's one on Southern League then.
I already picked one up. There's going to be, there's going to be maybe a big one that we have back.
Oh, yeah. It's got something in its name too.
So anyway, y'all can contact me anytime you've got any questions or thoughts or whatever. Contact Wendy. We're, you know, I'm really stretched, but I will do my best to answer any questions.
Sorry, quick, quick announcement, not to mention this. Uh, the council last meeting had voted to disband the 281 alternative, um, you know, route uh, thing that we had last year. And we're creating a transportation planning advisory committee that's going to be at 11:00 AM this Thursday. We'll also have a component for people. Uh, specifically, there's going to be two parts of it. There's going to be transportation, which is going to include the routes and talking about different routes. Um, talk to Texas. They also want to talk to the city eventually about taking back to anyone that made the main street or whatever we want to call it, is going to be part of, of that discussion. Um, so it'll be all transportation types of, it shows 281, but it'll leave everything. Also within there, there's going to be a, um, uh, you know, they basically, basically a subcommittee, kind of like we have with, um, historic and then there's, and there's a, um, spring skate. We're going to have a, one of just alternative transportation modes, paths, that kind of stuff. And the council will swim and we'll be involved in that. But if you are interested, I think the only two, what council asked me to do was invite the people that were already in that, that old 281 committee. So I think Janelle Fox, I think Wendy got an email, but if you want to be part of the group, if you want to show up, you can. If you want to be part of the group, just send a quick email, ask to be in the group. But, uh, we invited the people we knew about that were at the last meeting, so. I said, those two folks, I think were invited, but other people can, I just want to let you know that we are starting out the city and not that we have a. Here, oh, yes, yes, right here.
If I can put you back on that, I was on that committee task force because I was part of your commission. So I would strongly urge you as a commission to have someone who's actively a commissioner to be on that task force.
I'll be in at the hospital on Thursday. Get blood shot me right now.
So I don't understand what this is really, what is this really for? Just to text on?
So it's, 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 it's for two things. It's going to be for right now, it's going to be really dealing with the issue of the different routes and what we'll do with, with 281 once it appears that Texas wants to give it back. There's much of an issue whether it be a board ban, other things like that. But that's going to be one of the biggest issues facing us is the 281 issue. But there's other transportation, there's other issues. They can include busing, they can include trails, they can include, just a lot of maintenance. And there's going to be a lot of different issues that, that all encompassing for transportation. And then there'll be subgroup that deals specifically with walkability, which is the old wheels. So, but that's a committee we, was that?
Busing?
This is, I'm not saying, not saying we're busing here, just saying all transportation modes. Now, we don't have, we don't have buses. But anyways, that's what, that's what that's about.
All right, I think we're done with the announcements. Uh, we'll move on to new business. So the first step is consideration discussion and thinking possible to take action on the investment to certificate the corporate and this for this live street pizza or a one main street. This was, uh, and just. Maybe it's going to.
The pizza place 413.
Why? I'm sorry.
Yes, um, notice on Main Street, 413. Do y'all recall, why wrote 413?
I was going to say. That is familiar.
Do y'all recall receiving that photo where you see the E C building facing Main Street? Those two stuck old places that you said no siding, which was the right answer. It used to have two glass.
Yeah, doors.
Just fixed glass.
Oh, okay.
Since it was found in the yearbook, 76. It should go back because it was done before we came of this. Yeah, it had two glass windows there. You remember when you said this thing? No, I don't. But do you recall seeing a photo of it?
No, I don't. Yeah, I don't remember that.
So the top of the, the glass. So the top of the, the glass. Almost the top of a glass typically.
Yeah.
Typically, this is eighty inches.
Yeah.
Almost every door and window separately. And then you have a head. That's the one that takes the. So that glass matched the side on the inside corner. And then it dropped to the floor like a shoulder. When I'm asking y'all, excuse me, is go ahead and prove that, so they decide to know you or not. But document that, that whoever buys it, they can go ahead and flag those two pieces of glass door glass. And that's appropriate.
Does this picture face fourth street?
Yeah.
That faces her property. That's, that's what he proposed to do, like a main course. That's. That's fourth street. But we'll be on your right hand. That's facing me.
So this faces Main Street.
Yeah. Why don't we go ahead and go to Candy's spot?
Consideration discussion and take action on the appropriate minutes COA for real estate. Or thirteen Main Street. To replace sign and.
Okay. So I've seen the information on the fourteen, I did it yesterday, which was Sunday, in case y'all didn't see it. And it has the follow-ups of different signs that she wants. And the main thing is, when you go to the, written out of the report, that it's all back signing one sign and all this information. And keep her squeaky clean. When anybody comes back and says, what do you live and get away with stuff? Did you say that, did I?
Well, I found this one now.
Well, that's your. So the C O A report, this is a replacement, it is a piece of sign, it is a location. And the same size. She's under thirty-two square feet. That's a maximum. The replacement signs shall be designed and constructed to comply with obligations of this code for use of materials low stressive. H one five point one, which is the introduction of building code on signs, which the city has adopted that. Shall be designed and constructed to withstand wind pressure as provided in chapter sixteen, or in page one of our concrete window. So what does that mean? Stop reading. What does that mean? So far, you've had that sign for many, many years.
We didn't place the first time, so.
So it's never fallen open, but if she were to remove it and do it. If we don't tell her this stuff and then your sign falls over, you can hurt someone. Typically, when you go to the sign company, she would let them read that and then they wouldn't know what to do. If they don't know what to do, I would hire someone else. They should protect her. Cause that way he keeps everybody within following the code. Cause signs can be very dangerous. The next page. Based on the rules of the City of Blanco and the Commission of the Blanco Historic Preservation Commission, or the staff of the City of Blanco should approve the certificate of appropriateness as required by the applicant. That it does conform to Division sixty-nine standards and the fact findings, I have one to sell. Hopefully you had a chance to read that. This is for the forty-eight, that's the end of the photo, that's four feet wide, I'm covering high, seventy-two inch wide. It's a square sign. It will be mounted on the front yard, a metal post as existing. The signs and fourteen square feet should be required to be set back a minimum of eight feet the street right away. So that's something I'm learning about. If you go to the street, if you launch a text off, main street and go back, all signs should be recessed back, set back feet. Which it already is. That's just something for the future development. Eight feet, real standard, real simple. Cause it can get complicated. Um, this was. Last paper. This was not, this was not requested in time, however, there is no signage lining being requested. As this application and its C O A, any permit will be required at this other day and time. Any time and sign of signage lining and underground wiring is to be denied at this time. So you'll see like that corner plate or, or Blanco. They can back and put some lights later, which she decided to do that, which it does not. Oh, you do? It has on, well, she requested, so we can't deny the proof that's there already. Okay, so that's my report.
I'm gonna get Wendy to tell me what kind of, Wendy Osmond's telling what kind of shades to put on so it would be that.
Yeah, we can help you with that. She's turning in the application. You can approve, you can reprove. Approve my report based on the fact finding. You can approve her application. She's already submitted a permit. It's not been dismissed with all those photos. I'll leave that report to you guys.
Do you wanna have this discussion? Any questions?
Would you think when they ask for favor, you know, it's always nice to say, I'm not a favor. But when they're wanting something that's nice.
Yeah, do you have any questions?
We're all here.
And I, I was gonna do it white. I was gonna do my black background at first. And, and then I was just looking at designs on randomly. Yeah. That's when I got great thing to, to slip it out. I said, this, do we want to act so easy, but looks fine?
I think it looks pretty classy.
I think so, I think too. And I said, okay, what kind of material can you make it out of? That will not fade, that will resist the fade. I said, because the whole was started. It's why it happens for.
Well, that's.
Yeah, it, it's held up for a minute and he had. It'll be a metal sign. That. That won't, that won't, uh, won't fade out. One of those signs.
Um, if it's a metal sign, it's probably legs or.
I make the motion that be approved. Whatever it needs to be.
That's a small one, that's.
We have a second. I'm all in favor.
What, you like the last one?
I like the last one. I think it's the real.
It's one of the able to see the track. That's why I'm not gonna do those for you.
Oh, okay.
I always thought, you know, and yeah, yeah, but sometimes it's hard to see and I should. Look, before you go past the sign and then my gaffer.
Yes, I'm, I'm watching that because it's.
Okay, great.
What was the group all about?
Uh, the sign.
First sign.
Was that the report of the C O A?
The C O A. Uh, I'll make a motion to prove the report. Do I have a second? All in favor?
So I have a question for you guys, cause it's a new body that us. But when this is done, you go to the city, guess you could give it, I don't know. So they can let her know that, okay? Sometime, should be certified later.
Yeah.
So it's documented. Then do y'all keep it in folder to file for the next people in the next five years, something like that?
I assume it. You're supposed to. Yeah, I assume it's like. Like whoever's been filing, I would, the city, I assume the city's.
I would let the city do it something.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
But you guys with back there should have that.
Okay.
Cause what happens every time is the turnover, no one else.
Yeah.
And then it's hard to get a hold, we're not getting any number.
So I guess so.
So the city's like, they have all our records that we need to enter from me or Lori, just email me and we'll.
Yeah, all we have to put is print it all out.
The rea, the reason. The reason is, cause, uh, it's real hard to reinvent the wheel when the city already regularly exists in the state. And we don't want somebody to do it wrong in the future. And then after we do.
We were also starting to heat them on a shared drive with the city under the H P C. Any of these documents, we could easily get them, not just paper, but also digital.
I'm just asking for. We can go back to, uh, pizza place. I have not heard we can event. This is all on Main Street. Found this online with a nineteen eighty-eight Blanco High Street yearbook. On the back, Eric Tyson's. We were here on the twenty-fifth of September. I had asked, can you read a? No one really had. No one really had documented pictures of it. E C that had the permit, they never got back. That means, that means they didn't find anything. So I typed it, I Googled. Before became a desperate nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-seven, all the way to eighty-eight and put their P E C building construction that yearbook popped out. And you go to the library, uh, waiting time, like what they said, through the back door. You was the first to get up, said, Dean, I'll look at that. So we pointed out. There's that stucco and there's the glass and the glass and it matches the sign. What I'm asking you, if it's negative, it's a spark, it's in the patcher, that the next guy that buys it. They can go ahead and do that, cause it was every four of those are desperate. I'll leave that to you guys. That's my, I'm.
Are we gonna be to approve that today or are we? Cause I feel like we already approved everything.
You approved everything before that. I did ask the state, but what they said, listen to this part. Do not undermine the commissioner. Give the commissioner the opportunity to approve of that. Cause y'all wanna hear it, okay? And then there was a small bit of thing. No one can ever remind.
That's just like if I bought it tomorrow, I said, may I put windows?
Well, isn't that a showroom for cars, some cars at one time? It was Mr. Didway, um, the. Well, I knew that, but it was one time I thought maybe he sold cars or something in there too, or something like that. I knew it was vague, so you see.
I don't know that far. I know it was a bathroom.
They didn't construct them.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one thing.
So this was like, we're pulling a pin out of the haystack. At the R N A. Those top, there is, we're happy.
I'll take the motion to. On that particular. Number one. Put them two windows.
Yeah, the next person.
Oh, second.
Well, y'all think it's really great, my lady. I don't know, it's business.
Oh, me too.
It's better when I got a.
I know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I can. Spray my butt. Okay.
Hold on, can I bring, turn on the light? There you go.
Light's on, right? Maybe I need to turn.
There's no, there's no, there's no light more in there.
Got the rant, so.
Over all the minutes now? Oh, we still have a couple.
They're going through the cancellation next. Demolition of my art property. There's a. Kind of directed.
Thank you, ladies.
Bye, thank you. Yes, we'll thank. We're gonna come. Next consideration. Uh, the approval C O A for the. It's part of Jack and I were here. But you have a report on.
Sorry, I forgot.
On, uh, the.
What number?
It's three.
Provo minutes?
No, I mean, do we already go? Are we doing? Yeah, I thought so, but then that's before we go through the approval minutes. No, but four is the approval minutes. We had a done three.
I don't know, I think we can't, we can't.
We give their agenda, three approval minutes for consideration of meeting due to Christmas holidays.
Yeah. So have we done three? Do we need to do three?
Uh, maybe not.
Yeah, that's what I thought. To the C O A for.
Yeah, we got one and two.
We got nine and two.
Yeah. So, uh, do you have a report on that already?
Number three?
Yeah.
No, I don't do the math. I think y'all are looking for the secretary.
Mike says minutes. Okay, we'll go, we'll go off this. So. Approval minutes. Do we have a minutes anywhere? Cause we also don't have the secretary.
I just sent you another email.
Well, he was here that I.
So I don't have minutes.
So I thought that we pass on number three until we find the minute.
Yeah. It will be minutes from December twenty-fourth. Uh, four is the consideration discussion. Ask for action on the cancellation of.
But we need a second, some more motion.
All right, then the next one is, uh, canceling our December twenty-fifth. It's Christmas. We could do a special meeting on Monday, the thirteenth.
Special meeting if we need one.
You don't have to have.
No, she's saying like, it's, it's in there, like, do we need one? Do we wanna discuss having one or?
I made a motion that we cancel the December meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor? So we're not. So we're not. Four is special meeting, we just kind of let December go by, we'll let December go by. Uh, next is five, which is consideration discussion, take possible action on enforcement of a minimum sixty day stay of demolition for the. And where's the property's location of the store, but it's very.
You know, I wonder if it's been a long time since I've been here, but somebody did it. That humanity was the harm of.
I wasn't.
The sixty day.
The sixty day. Doesn't he?
Can I talk about it?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So the shooting, if you do see. Uh, one wants to demo a building or an armored building in the district. They have sixty days where they cannot touch, you have to get a certificate for demolition. Which the city uh don't think they have one. They're pretty much.
What's that?
A demolition, an application for demolition.
We have an application for demolition.
You do?
Yes, sir.
And we have to see the compliance with the law. So the U D C has sixty days. The Texas Certified Local Government says a minimum there should be this ninety days.
Minimum?
Men, like, so if the, the city does not match the state.
Yeah.
More towns and big towns are going with ninety and longer. Like that building that got knocked down, that old historic home. Tell me the name.
Arrosa.
Old Fifth or Sixth Street, I forget, I see it all the time.
Oh, that's.
That's outside the district. What I'm recommending is that you'll go citywide with all black marks ninety days or longer. Then you wonder, what can they do with that home? They're awesome.
Yeah.
But when I went over today, but they bought theirs until you get back in January. They helped me meet while some other town been doing an excellent job all day. And you would think the locals would be more interested, that's not fair, they're actually saying, no. If y'all want the house, we'll give it to you. Some people would think, I'll get it all over. I've been getting a house, I've been sort of calling. And I'm reading, so you figure that's never gonna happen, it's gonna happen. The local insurance, when they knocked down that corner house, they'll likely go in there and take out a lot of material. Somebody had to turn the windows, I want a window. So it does happen. But we don't want any weakness in the U D C. And this is a reason, it doesn't match the state.
Do we need to take action on that?
Not today. Because there's a lot of works, it's just something you can approve and say, we will allow.
Ninety days.
To go ahead and take a look and do as a reference, y'all can approve that, but not the change of the rules. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's it, my report there.
So we need to make a motion that we wait and let Rudy.
Do you guys?
Let's see.
Right, for the investigation.
Let me just make a motion.
I second. All in favor?
All right. So that the first and our second.
All right. So next, submit copies of all the approval minutes to T H C, the city C and G L, the requirements. Are we?
So I have a question too, we have some minutes to review.
Yeah.
And. Um, I guess we need to try to help the owners to find a.
Secretary. Yeah, so I'll maybe table that one, since we can't really make any motion.
And then I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk to Lori.
So you need a motion for different people?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that members that submit copies of all the meeting that's disabled. Until we have more information, that would.
That's it. We'll bring it back to you in the end.
We have a second? I second. All in favor? I agree. All right, number seven, submit resumes and current preservation commission or C L committee members. And the H P O to the T H C, this is also a city C L requirement we share. Um, we're doing. The resumes of the current preservation commission, C G O committee members. And the H P O to the T H C, this is a requirement. I assume we can just pull up the resumes instead of.
Yeah, they'll need the, yeah, the C L, they'll need the resumes and they'll need the uh your budget and they'll need um the minutes.
Okay, so it's like another pool table.
Yeah, you gotta have all, they'll require all of that.
Yeah. So let's uh, can I have a motion to table that? So we have our minutes sorted out. Uh, I, I second. I second. All in favor? Um. Four year evaluation early the two thousand twenty four reception. Um, that's. Maybe I. Four year evaluation. So we actually do our evaluations. But do we have that typically material to do our evaluation?
You should receive an email. From the coordinator.
Yeah.
And you fill in the lines.
Okay.
If you have any questions about any twenty twenty, I can help you, but it's not that difficult.
Okay.
It's not that difficult at all.
When we get that email, I guess.
She had a question.
I was just wondering about the email.
Yeah.
Who, who sent it?
Normally the chairperson in the H P O would receive it, sometimes the secretary. But it all goes back to the chairperson.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that.
You might, whoever your contact person is.
Yeah.
Tell them Rudy brought this out and I need another page and they'll target, they'll send it.
So what do we do with that number?
There.
Yeah. No, that's true. Most of it.
Can I make a motion that we table before your evaluation and tell them that the one that we need to fill out?
I'm second. All in favor? Um. Okay, number nine, the C L G annual report two thousand twenty three will be due in February. Uh, around the fourteenth, so we need to complete that annual report.
Is that like number eight?
Um.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was number nine, but it's at what, number eight, if it's in.
Close. This one is annual. And then the other one is every four years.
So how do we do number nine?
Uh, I have samples that I sent you, huh?
Okay.
But when it, it's not about it, thank you, you should get an email. Reason why I would do this, because eventually if you go after a grant that's in for street skating, well, we're dropping you, because y'all need to check up simple things. That's true. And you get national recognition, it's Blackcomb Bay and a story city. One of these days are recommending by someone from the state.
Yeah, to do, we have a training.
Really did all this, it's incredible, it's fun. I know where Matthew Wayne came, she was small, Chris. She's been busy working out.
So I can do the motion to table number nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I make that motion. That we table on the.
Second. All in favor? I.
The second, did it? I get it.
All right, ten minutes, National Preservation Month in May two thousand twenty four, I did. Want to discuss that and we're not taking an action on it, it's just a discussion, so. Yes, for anyone?
I'm not sure, um, I, I don't know when this other thing's happening. Someone is talking about doing a heritage day. March. In March, okay. Um.
It was suggested they do it in May, tie in with this, but they chose March.
Okay. I was gonna say maybe we should try it, you know.
Can I, can I have some ideas?
Yeah.
What other cities done and what we did here, the number one thing was a proclamation. The mayor rented the month before. Came out in the paper, it was picture taking, y'all can be there with the mayor to constantly take pictures, put it on Facebook. It gives. Uh, an image to the city, pride, to hold on to what's here. Uh, awareness. Respect, if you will, for the property, does lots of proclamation respect. We also made it the last day at the Pioneer Museum that used to be here. We had some twenty four by twenty four that was approved for general, I went in town and picked them up. It had the courthouse, and I still have the graph. You go in the closet, way up on top, there's a few there. And we had them on all the storefronts. When people went up, walked by, they would, they would recognize them. And then it would read, just something real simple, real small, very inexpensive, if I'm not mistaken, they were seventeen dollars. I would recommend if you guys could sell it. And use that money for y'all's budget, but then you gotta get approved by the city. But it's a good fundraiser.
Yeah.
Some other things that Blackwood should probably do here, you have a lot of local artists. Maybe have them set up for the street sidewalk. And show awareness, their extra money. That's some of the nonprofits.
Can I ask the friends group of the, because y'all have a friends group now, right?
Yeah.
Of course.
The friends groups?
Friends group.
Uh, they can do that then when they need the money and then.
They can do that.
Yeah.
Uh, nonprofits can set up, it's just that month of activities.
Yeah.
Not bigger than life. But something local. Maybe y'all can get the wagon for the buggy barn, set up out here. Get some recognition and all town white girl and everybody with their guns and spurs and what happens.
Yeah, I don't know if it would, um, if anyone would be interested, it would be fun. Uh, people to just do, uh. Like you're talking where people are noticing like the wagons and stuff. If we could have someone, uh. Showing. Different old time handcraft.
All of, all of the above. Some other ideas, there's a lot of art clubs that like to come and tell me hamburgers. Nineteen fifties cars, nineteen twenties, in bio, they set up. It's just a recognition of old stuff during that month, every weekend. Um, some cities will take the libraries, web. And they'll publish books of local history. And they'll be like, let's say you got YouTube and you did some quick little things, and people would go and click that. Or Joe Man, somebody that's a good spot for us.
Yeah.
Almost whatever your brain can grab a hold of, you think that's important. All right.
Um, so one of the things y'all could do that they've asked for someone, is you can actually start working now and in May, the, the, um. Bollin Alley and the bank at one time, Calvin had come to me and they want to become the Texas Treasure Business Award, they want to get those awards. Uh, it has to be a business that's still glowing after so many years. Bollin Alley would qualify in the bank, even though the bank's in different hands, it's still a bank. And so it would qualify and y'all could present those awards in May, it doesn't cost you anything. And it would be a, a special presentation for two major businesses in Blackdale.
And if they are in charge, they would.
Drug stores, I think the drug stores.
They already have them.
They already got one.
So if there's a fee normally they pay, but it's fifty years or better. We talked about that, we just, we had too much in our hands.
And I, and I know he banned from the Bollin, she talked to me the other day about it, about needing some help doing that, so. Um, so I'd reach out to her or whatever, I think that would be a great goal for May, for y'all to be able to, to do.
You know, and everything has that market base where other stuff could take place. So we've talked about being approved here. And then one year, um, who was it, they did a hamburger, oh, Jerry J did a hamburger.
Yeah, they did.
They did a.
Yeah, I, I suppose it's been many years since I spoke to the gentleman, but there's some guy that, uh. Makes rooms the old fashioned way and.
Perfect.
Yeah, it'd be. It'd be neat if he, you know, would come and set up for one of the events, because I'd, I'd go watch, you know.
That might be a good one to, to give back to viewers, is do like a torn walking tour. Uh, if your head has a bank, they can win free people Saturday at one to see the old jailhouse. They need a contribution for where to go to that's okay. Maybe street skate. Have snow and everything to see the jailhouse, but maybe one season, because it's all private. So.
Lots of good ideas.
Yeah, right.
And we have some.
Y'all can street, you go home and write them down.
Yeah. All right, so the old business, uh, approval of minutes on August twenty eighth regular meeting.
We still need to get the minutes.
Yeah, I was like.
So we'll, we'll, we'll leave table up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll table the August twenty eighth. Uh, minutes. Do you want to make a comment?
Yes.
Uh, can I hear a motion for tabling?
I'll send the table and the approval of the minutes by the August twenty eighth.
What is that? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, so we're going back to the assignment for secretary and.
I, I don't be secretary, but I'll be the minutes if you have.
Okay.
If my wife is too. There's too much, they wanted to take a minute, they don't want stuff.
Yeah. I honestly, I'm kind of at a loss for secretary position right now, um.
So I would say you table it now.
Yeah.
And maybe you and I need to meet before this meeting next month and kind of discuss. January, we'll eventually table, we'll basically have that, we'll have to get a secretary eventually.
Yeah. So we'll, uh, maybe. To table the assignment of secretary. But I'm gonna vote. I, I motion that we uh table the assignment of secretary. All in favor? Um. All right, last, and this the media reports. Media report. Anyway, yeah, Rudy is gonna do one, I'm gonna make that up.
I'll see you, man. Of course. So. Yeah.
He's arguing.
Yeah, there was eight altogether. I'll talk about it. The uh, practice that hit the pulse right here. The old one that on the corner in the square have a hole through it. So P E C was everywhere, runs up. A lot. Hole through it. With a washer, and it stays there. Therefore. They could only implant. But what happens with the wind, it starts wallowing it, and then the climate kind of flues, and it falls, and that's bad. And the wind got a hold of these two. Let's see that. That's one item. See, they can drill holes through them. And then put a bolt, right? As far as these two banners that got whipped, was the one over here at K and C Supply? That was facing east to west, people would drive in. But if y'all recall in the last eight months, we had some very high wind. That we call it.
Yeah.
So the higher the banners and exposed to the element.
Yeah.
Is what you get, the ones here to square, they not get that weak. Remember, they were facing this way, so they were getting slapped on the northern winds. The one over here by the river is facing this way, one sixty three, so the wind would hit it on the edge. Same thing on the hospital. So that's why they didn't get damaged, the old one that feels inspired, so when facing this way, it got here. My recommendation, if y'all have, you know, budget, is to be placing banners, and if you notice, my view of this cut length. Some of them four year, because it's flat, and they didn't have the tendency to cut too bad. Just. They're supposed to see banners from cracking. Wind is supposed to go through and be forgiving on the banner. But Blackwood has some trouble. These are like a vinyl material with cloth in between. We don't know what the priest would do, do in the spanners in a heart priest. So since there's no voting today, other than the committee report, I'm looking at this. I believe Joe now has the contact where he can. Okay, well, I'm gonna recommend from P E C next time, that one, the older gentleman that was here, he said, the lower part of the banners. And V S goes eighty. Out there, they sky out, it was highly, but nothing that don't damage them. Out there, they sky out, was highly put, nothing that don't damage them. But not, it's not on fault, it just.
Yeah.
It just happened, okay? So if y'all can consider predicting, putting in the agenda, of visiting these banners here. Of replacing them. Next on the signs, if I can see that photo, um.
Oh, that was setting.
Yeah, I just. Okay, y'all recognize the building there? That's here in one. Anybody?
I, I want to say it, my thing to back up the drugstore.
You're so close. I think it's Pete's car right here. I have to be aware, but you have blown, she's blown, anyway, it's her habits.
Oh, okay.
That building is to be at the corner, facing that way. But when people were driving on Fourth Street, it said, bright and early, coffee and tea.
I, I was trying to read, I.
We're gonna talk about that. We're gonna talk about that, that's privately owned.
Okay.
But it, it is a landmark. And wherever you see old buildings, old camps, and it'll say, drink up taller, setting up. A lot of the, a lot of the towns are going back and starting permissions, and repainting them. And it still looks like from nineteen twenty. Blanco has that. And he only would like to go back. Which he could, and repaint that, once they remove that pickup fence, we'll be able to redevelop. Charles, Charles Reddick, I think I have it on Facebook.
Yeah, Charles Reddick.
Yeah, somewhere. And he said, hey, I found this, some other county in Texas, but we think they copied this one here. And apparently, they must have sold, besides, good work stuff, and coffee and tea. But that's Blanco there. I will encourage the owner, with y'all's approval, to go ahead and pursue it. If y'all would like to make a motion. That we should look into it, he has a point.
It's not on our agenda to make a motion.
I think so, right?
Yeah, it's put it on the agenda for next month.
It should be under approval, cause it is under a committee.
Yeah, it's under the business.
He's gonna approve it. You're gonna approve it today? Yes, I believe you can, it's, that's under committee report.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is under committee, yeah. So they can approve to proceed to ask the owner, not to approve of doing it.
No, to tell him to do it, yeah.
Or him to, hey, the guys like it.
Yeah, well, I didn't think he could have approved by the rules, not my rules. Approved anything that's not on the agenda, and I don't see that on.
It's, it's on the agenda, but it's under the committee report, it's damaged banner, and.
I think that and recommendations. But recommendations, it means says, recommendations without damaged banners.
Which exists.
So.
Yeah.
We can put it on, maybe we can put it on January.
Let's keep ourselves.
May hold on, it's looking good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, one other place, if there's an old sign. If you look real hard, and you stand in front of the courthouse, would you rear into the north, that way? Up on the. facade of the main door to the courthouse, you can still see the word bank. If you look at your county books. Always said with bank. That's another one y'all might want to think about, that's all there is for the city of. What else, my committee reports, Eddie?
That was it, because, uh.
Silence.
Yes, street skate, Rockwell, and then Spencer Parker.
That's my report, but it's.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Rudy.
You're welcome. So, the other two people that are gonna do committee reports are not here, so I think, uh, we go ahead and adjourn the meeting for. All right, we're in the meeting at seven.